Good evening, the time is seven oh four and I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Norwalk Common Council for August twentieth two thousand twenty five. If you'll please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's plan.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under their power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'll please call the wall.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. Edie.
Here.
Ms. Winterstrand.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
We have fifteen in attendance.
Okay, fifteen in attendance, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, public participation.
We have Mr. John Levin.
Mr. Levin, if you'll approach the podium, please.
Sure. Good evening, esteemed council members. Tonight, or soon after, you will be making important decisions about revising Norwalk's charter. The Charter Revision Commission, which you appointed last September and which I have been honored to serve on, has done an enormous amount of work, hard work, and has prepared recommended changes, which I believe will, if approved by voters, help to improve democracy in our city, improve the city's government's operating effectiveness, and make our system more fair. I'm here tonight to urge you to adopt the recommended changes into three separate referenda questions for voters to consider in November, which this council, of course, has the authority to do at its own discretion. The three parts, in my view, should be: four-year terms for the mayor, council, and town clerk, compensation for council members, and third, everything else. With respect to four-year terms, I am concerned that this item is so strongly opposed by some people in the city that they will wage their own jihad and seek to tank the entire charter revision to prevent just that measure from passing. Voters really should have a chance to adopt or reject this change as a standalone item. While I personally do not support this change, I supported the recommendation when it was voted on by the CRC because I believe this should be for the voters to decide, not me. By presenting this change as a single question, you will show respect for voters by presenting it as a clear, single, simple item, unencumbered by any other considerations. These are the same voters that elected all of you. We should trust them and respect them. I know you do. With respect to council member compensation, I was horrified when I first learned that our city's charter has kept council pay at fifty dollars a month for five decades or more. This is very bad on so many levels, and I sent you all a letter via Irene Dixon a few months ago, sharing my thoughts on it and how to fix it. I don't know what council compensation should be, but I know that fifty dollars a month is very wrong. And when the CRC began its work last October, I saw it and the council agreed unanimously to initially to remove council compensation from the charter altogether. I see no problem with the proposal for three percent of the mayor's salary. Heck, if I could choose it, I would make it three percent of the superintendent's salary. Or even three percent of the highest paid Norwalk police officer's salary. Regardless.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Sure, please. Regardless, please also let voters choose it as a standalone item and the proposal would increase the pay from six hundred dollars, annual pay from six hundred to a little over five thousand. And I really think that voters will see the justice and fairness of this change and will support it and will agree that membership on this council should not be restricted to residents who have no need for money and face no opportunity costs for serving. Last, the remaining changes are useful and important, and I don't think they should generate much controversy, if any. Twelve more seconds, please. If any, some of them are really good ones, and I'm proud of the work we did. I think that there are many necessary changes that were not taken up by this charter revision cycle, and they will have to wait for the next one in two thousand and thirty, or sooner if the council or petitioning voter so choose. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Levin, and thank you for your service at the Charter Revision Commission. Okay, moving on to item number three.
Wait, oh, wait, is there anyone?
Go ahead, I checked, there's nobody. There was only one person and... Unless somebody else is... We have Mr. Livingston line, and I'm not sure if he has anything to add.
Yeah. That's it, awesome.
Okay. So the next item is item number three. Actions pertaining to the final report of the Charter Revision Commission. I will read item A. Prunia or rejection in its entirety or in separate provisions, the final report of the Charter Revision Commission dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, including the responses to the recommendations of the common council. That item is...
And I'll move that now.
Councilwoman Smith has moved that forward. And who is this speaker?
Well, I think we want to ask if there are any discussions or or questions or...
Any discussions, any from the council? Mr. Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the charter. So I'd like to make a motion to mention by striking sections three dash four eight two and three three C two, and say if you weren't. Okay, so you know, I've already disputed the lack of merits for this proposal, so I'll add some historical context. I'll say that when the law was enacted in nineteen seventy four, Norwalk and the rest of the state of Connecticut had a smaller population, had a less diverse demographic composition. So there were fewer incorporated cities, there were larger amounts of small towns and suburban areas where the population was 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 less than it is today, and the population was relatively homogeneous. And under those circumstances, the law's intention was sensical. In Norwalk today, given the level of our population, the composition of our demographics, the economic growth the city has 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 experienced, and also the creation of the districts in nineteen eighty-three, all taken together, have enabled our city to sustain politically competitive elections. In fact, it even encourages civic engagement. So implementing this law beyond boards and commission, I think, will jeopardize the progress that the city has made in its overall democracy. And it will limit voter choice rather than strengthening it. So I'd like to reaffirm my motion to strike this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Livingston, I read another...
Yes.
We're looking at section... We're looking at section three dash four A two. So you want to strike the the additional two members and the mode of election for those two members and keep the current at-large group at five?
Correct.
I just want to understand that. Okay, and then you also would you cited a separate second section. What was that second section?
That was three three C two.
Three three C two, you got it. I want to make sure I know exactly where you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
The motion is on the table, on the floor. Are there further discussion? Mr. Seed.
Yeah, mine, and I definitely respect councilman Lopez's opinion that, but I think that we hear and we see that it's people in Norwalk who don't feel like they're represented. And no matter what we we say, we say we listen to people, and I'm sure that we do try our best. But I think that it's not ironic that people like Ms. Diane Lord Chellin, when she gets up to speak, the first question she asks is, do you hear me? And I feel like there's people out there in Norwalk that feel like we don't hear them. And I feel like with this, this still ensures that people have voter choices. Members of the public, if they're supposed to vote for it, they will vote for all seven members. Really what it is, and Tony Menick eloquently put it, is really just a cap on how many a majority can represent, can put. It doesn't cease to one party. What it does is it just caps the amount that one party could put out at five. Now, we look at it as Democrat and Republican, but it could be any party, independent, working families, the Black Panther Party, if they got started in Norwalk, any party, the modes that they put up in spot. And it's still a competitive race. And I think that is important. This is, if you look back at the comments, public comments, this is the one thing that came up over and over again. And I feel like, if anything, we should allow the voters to say, have a say in this. And like Ms. Levin said, I feel like we should give this to the voters for the voters to say. It's just something that it's been debated about for hours. But I feel like this is something that the voters should really decide. And I feel like we're not taking anything away from voters. They're not saying that they can only vote for five, they voted for seven. And I feel like it strengthens it, and I feel like we should hear the people who feel like they haven't been heard.
Thank you. Let's just see further discussion. I'll go for the vote.
Wait, Ms. Dunn has her hand up.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Dunn has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
I just have it's important to me that we're discussing things, and Mr. Lopez is talking about documents. And I think that, given this is going to be public, is there a way to put this into the Zoom links so that people can see it as they're talking about it? I know that there's not a lot of people maybe watching at the moment, but we should be showing what we're talking about in the language. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Nobody should be presenting it while we're doing it, otherwise people are going to have to do a lot more work and be less engaged, so.
Mr. Seed.
It is on, it is in the published agenda. But we are trying to to do that.
If there's ability to do that, it'd probably be a good thing.
You can go to page thirty-four. Sorry, page thirty-three.
Is there any further discussion? Any hands raised?
Oh, yeah, we need to be able to... But you're doing roll call votes.
Yeah. Call for a roll call vote on this.
Unreadiness, just so that we're clear. Simply on what council member Lopez is asking to be stricken from the purse.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Can we stop the share, please?
Sorry?
Can we stop the share, please?
At fifteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will ask for a roll call vote on this item.
And so, yes. Mr. Burnett.
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
No.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
No.
Mr. Seed.
No.
Mr. Wiggins.
No.
Ms. Young.
No.
Ms. Edie.
Yes.
Ms. Winterstrand.
Yes.
Ms. Dunn.
No.
Mr. Sutton.
Yes.
Mr. Frer.
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan.
Yes.
Six, seven, eight, nine, we have nine, eight, and six.
Nine in favor and six opposed, the motion carries.
So for the record, if I may, that will restore the current, the status quo. So we remain at fifteen members and five at large.
So is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you. I make a motion to strike the following language from four dash seven C. The language that has been to restore the stricken language regarding where it says, which shall be set at six hundred dollars per annum, and to strike the language concerning that each council member receive no less than three percent of the mayor's budgeted salary may be permitted by Article nineteen of the of the state constitution. So I want to strike, motion to strike in part this four dash seven C and speak to it.
Motion made by Mr. Goldstein.
And this is on my, on my screen on the agenda, it's on page fifty-seven. But it may be slightly different on the copy that's on the screen. So I can wait till that and then just speak very briefly to it.
So a motion made by Mr. Goldstein to strike item four dash seven C regarding council compensation.
To strike the section requiring the level compensation.
Yes, the level, right, I'm sorry, you're right. Any discussion or comment?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say something very briefly. So while there are numerous meritorious arguments for this that were raised throughout the charter revision process, both by the Charter Revision Commission and by my common council members, fellow common council members, I am deeply worried that this particular provision will potentially imperil the passage of a lot of the important work that's gone on here, in particular because there is an optical, I, in my view, there is an optical problem when it comes to asking for a pay raise, when there has been property tax hikes due to the reevaluation. I just do not think that is the right message to send to voters. It's something that I have said from the inception of this. And so I want to be consistent with my views on this, and so in there I make my motion to strike the aforementioned section.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I know we've been going over this for months now. And, you know, I stand in favor of revising this, to me, issue. We have a constituent in the audience that headed to and put a very great spin on why we should be supporting this. It's been decades to where individuals that's been serving in this position has been receiving about fifty dollars a month, which is really nothing, and there's a lot of work that has to be done to be a part of this process. And if I, I just want to, you know, make it be clear, this is probably not going to affect some of us on this council. Because this won't be taken into effect for the next, you know, four years, so. For all the voters that that's, you know, watching this and understanding that, yes, we do care about taxes and and all of those things, but another side of this is equity and individuals being a part of this process. And when you look at the voters and you look at the people that's voting for this, we have to really pay attention to that. And if we want to have more people be a part of this process, this is one way to, a good start. So they don't have to worry about some of the things and that they have to deal with at home. We need more people involved politically. We got over ninety thousand people in this city, and it's a very small percentage of voters and people that engage, so. I'm in favor.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to say that there are so many options that we often look at and consider while sitting in these seat. And I've heard a lot of rhetoric, and I've heard a lot of comments, I've read a lot of comments of people on both sides of this topic. I would just like to say for the public record that we have to really address how we treat each other in the lack of equity and the lack of valuing people's times. It was either in the Norwalk, no, I think it was on Nancy or Norwalk. There was someone in the comments that said, if you wanted to, if you wanted this to be your career, you should have thought of that before running or something, I'm paraphrasing. And I kind of read it and I chuckled. It's not that, when you're in civil service, when you're a civil servant, it's not that you're looking for a career grab like you would do when you're a professional, but you have an inner being to actively sacrifice yourself for the better good of other people. But that sacrifice should not come as such a great burden that it's really now being a burden. And I really encourage everybody to vote their conscience. I'm completely okay with people voting their conscience. But I really wish we would give our constituents an opportunity to voice their opinion with all of the knowledge. Many, many of our constituents don't even know about the compensa- compensation because we have not taken the time to first empower and second to educate them on this issue. And I know some people will say, well, we can bring it up in charter later, but if we bring it up in charter later, that's another expense. Every time we do a charter process, that's a cost. And so I just want everybody to really think about when are we going to stop talking about, we are a diverse community, and we believe in equity, and we, all these fancy words, and when is our actions going to support what we say? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Ayers, any further comment or discussion? Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've gone back and forth on this particular item, and it really struck me that even the term compensation is being used because the word compensation, as it applies to the amount of work or output from an individual, this is really conflicting that we look at the amount of the quote-unquote compensation versus what this council or any council to come delivers at this council table. The numbers just make absolutely no sense. So, and also, as was stated, this is not self-serving, and I want that to be noted. This change is not for the individuals that are sitting at this table currently. We're setting the groundwork for the future. And change is never comfortable, but if you implement change and give it time to manifest itself, that change will happen in a very smooth manner. So this isn't self-serving. We're not giving ourselves, those sitting at this table, a raise. We're simply setting the table for the future so that those individuals that might need some type of financial assistance to serve in this particular capacity will have that option to do it. So we're not giving ourselves a raise. And again, at some point, we need to tackle the word compensation because if we really look at the definition of compensation versus the output of the work of an individual, that's an improper term to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to also say for those who's watching, if you don't pay attention to politics and how the council was ran, we put in over twenty hours a week. So this is not a lot of money. So I just want to make that clear. And to Mr. Burnett's point, we are not benefiting as much as the future will benefit. You're talking about fifty dollars a month. It's probably cost more money to send out those checks every month. So really consider this and think about us as leaders and looking forward to the next people that come after us.
Thank you. Further, Ms. Smith?
Yeah, you know, I just this is a very difficult one, you know, and Mr. Burnett, thank you for your comments. Ms. Ayers, thank you for your comments, Mr. Wiggins as well. I know I've really been going back and forth on this one. I really do see it as an issue of equity and an issue of, you know, the value of the work that we do because it is, you know, we do, we do give a lot. But what I keep going back to is, is, you know, thinking about, you know, how our residents are really struggling, some residents really, really struggling to put food on the table, managing these tax increases that we've had over the last couple of years due to the revale. And so, you know, I, it I know we're talking about, you know, you know, this not benefiting this particular council, right? This is not something that would take into effect until two thousand and twenty-nine. But how does that look to someone who's, you know, a single mom, for example, trying to put food on the table and really struggling with, you know, having to pay these taxes? So I think I'm going to go on the side of my constituents and making sure that you know, we don't seem to object to what they're struggling with.
Further comments or discussion? Mr. Seed.
Yeah, my, my, we it's tough because I felt the same way. But I thought about, like, that single mom. What if she wanted to run for council? And that's what I think this takes steps in, is making sure that single moms and people who are usually not are disadvantaged to come and run for these positions. I think this provision doesn't step in the right direction, and it's just when is going to be the right time? Taxes are, like, the property values might come down and property taxes now, but then it's going to be a garbage can issue, it's going to be, we didn't pay, it's going to be something, there's always going to be a reason for us not to do this. Even if they change the referendum, or we could change it in the budget, it's going to be politically suicide for the council to give themselves a raise, a raise. That would be essentially what we're really doing if we took it out of referendum. So I just, it's never the right time, it's always going to be controversial, and that's why I support it. And I think that it's all about messaging, and it's always going to, everything that's in this charter, we're going to get hit with in the campaign season. So I just think that we have to do the right thing because it sends the right message that we want those, those people to be a part of, the council to be a part of the process.
Further comment or discussion? Ms. Najelski-Eichner.
I feel Jalen's point on this side, that was exactly the same thing. I thought, you know, this is a question of who sits around this table, and at the end of the day, I'm not sure that five thousand dollars is, you know, enough to make a difference, but at least it's a start. But I think the other point, you know, that I I think writ large is an issue for, you know, this charter for us as a society right now. We do not respect the role of a legislature. I don't think people really understand what a legislature is intended for.
Respect the role of a legislature. I don't think people really understand what a legislature is intended for. And. That disrespect is baked in to a position that is compensated at a level that. You know, remains what it was in the nineteen fifties. You know, with a lack of working. You know, electronic devices for council members, um, a lack of resources provided. You know, and so I think that we get a lot of criticism. For failing to provide services on the basis of people, I think, thinking that we do this for a living. This is everyone's, uh, you know, second, third, fourth thing that they do. And then I don't think at the end of the day that this particular amount of money makes the difference one way or the other, but I think writ large. It is important that the city can. Take the time to consider. Whether they want their legislature to be a force in the city and what it takes to. To have a legislature that has. An equivalent capacity that is an equal body, um, that, you know, is a check and a balance and. Doing so is going to require structural change. Um, and this is some, is a small piece of it. I don't even know that it's the largest piece of it, but I think writ large, it is a question of whether we. Um, as a city, want a legislature that is. Is a powerful part of the city government structure. And I think that that is worth considering and worth voting for.
Further comment or discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jalen, because that's what I was going to say. When, when we think about the people that. Should be around these tables. It should, it, it, well, not should be, but it should be people that selected, but give other people opportunities to run like that. That single mother, right? And I think, you know, it's easy to say when, when. People like us or people in better financial positions. Can say constituents is being affected by it, but. You know. Unfortunately, we don't have, we have one constituent here today. That's actually in favor of. So some people hear from some people and some people hear from other people out. My constituents and people I've been, uh, speaking to about this is in favor of this. So, um. You know, I, I just want to. Put that out there, right? So who are we talking to? Um, when we talk about these issues and, you know, there's another part of this. You know, the people that might not need it or people not, might not, um, benefit from it. You could donate to those single parents. You can donate your, it's easy to take your check at the end of the year or monthly and donate. If, if that's how you feel, help that single mother out. Right? So think about that. This is, we can be very creative with this process and if it's a bunch of us, we go all put it together. But it might be someone on this council that might needs that. That might need that, that find, um, financials to help it. Issues they might have at home and so on and so forth. So. Consider that. We can give it back to our community.
Thank you. Further comment? Or discussion? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I listen to everybody, you know, the one thing I think about is the original authors or whomever. You know, back then in the charter who thought that fifty dollars. Back then, which was, if you equate it now, was, is seven hundred dollars, which was a pretty significant amount of money. And to think that we have gone decades without thinking about increasing that. It's just wrong. Um, I think getting fifty dollars, which equate what, after taxes is forty six dollars and fifty one cents. Doesn't pay for gas. Doesn't support phone, you know, the usage of our electronics, our phones or computers. And I, I think there's just. A missed opportunity and I've heard other council members talk about it. You know, if we talk about, we love the diversity and we want diversity. Or we should want that diversity of thought. Around the table. Whether you're a single mom or someone who's retired and, and has the benefit of being able to forego. Any type of compensation, but I think it's time for us to, to, to do what. We should do for our residents. I think people give of their time and their energy and I think. That's worth more than fifty dollars a month at this point. It, it's almost insulting to say that that is what we get for all the work that we do. At this point. In twenty twenty five. So I will be supporting an increase and as others have said. Some of us will not see the benefit of that, but looking forward. To folks who, who. It may think twice about joining or participating in this process because of financial concerns. We want to be able to. Provide an opportunity, um, for them to think twice about that and to motivate folks to possibly join. I don't think any of us here joined because of the money. I don't, I shouldn't even say think. None of us joined this because of compensation. And I'm sure we'll find if this passes or not, that we will always have folks. Who are interested in the council, but I don't see anyone, you know, jumping up to do this just for the compensation either. You either want to give back to the city, um, and that. Is going to be the thing that's, um, at the forefront for folks who want to participate in politics. It's not going to be because of any compensation. Um, I think it will be something that will help with that decision when we talk about, you know, a single parent. Having to, to find a babysitter. I mean, we, we've had this conversation, um, but I will be supporting this effort. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Mr. Seed?
Just on one point to what Ms. Young said. Nobody, I mean, you're talking about three percent. It comes out to a little bit over five, five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars in Noah, Connecticut doesn't get you very far. Five thousand dollars is not going to get people to, to just join for some, um, additional income. It is just going to help assist. Um, so I think it's important with messaging, everything in this charter is going to be about messaging. And I think that that's important. It's not that we're trying to give ourselves twenty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars. But five thousand dollars, even six thousand dollars in Noah, Connecticut. For some people, that's rent for one month. So six thousand dollars a year is not going to get people to, to jump up and say, hey, I'm going to run for council. Some money is not going to change the dynamics of why people are, are running for council.
Further comment or discussion on this issue? See, done. We'll have a real call vote if you.
Mr. Mayor, just. A positive vote. The, the, the motion is to eliminate this. So a positive vote would be supporting the elimination.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Najulski Eichner?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Seed?
No.
Mr. Wiggins?
No.
Ms. Young?
No.
Ms. Edie?
No.
Ms. Winterstrand?
No.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Frere?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Seven, seven yeses. Seven yeses. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight names.
Eight no's, uh, seven yes, the motion does not pass.
Can I just say, um, on this, um, inadvertently in the draft, we left out the two thousand nineteen effective date, but. That is the event date for this. It will show up in the final draft. Thank you.
Two, ten, twenty nine, right?
Twenty nine.
Oh, backwards.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we have further discussion or comment? Ms. Shanahan?
Yes, I have one other, um, item that I'd like to strike. Which is, I'm going to need Mr. Mendix help with this a little bit. So I'm looking at, it's under section seven dash two, A, three. And it is for the political and geographical balance of the BET. And, um, I like this, um, measure because I do think it's really important to have a different. Representation from each of the districts, but there's not a fail safe in this, um, in case there, um, is a situation where we really can't seem to find somebody to sit in one of those seats. And so I'd like to strike this because it feels as though there ought to be some type of provision that, um, is a backstop. So if you can't find somebody from a certain district to sit in that seat. That a two thirds vote from the council could then override the, um, geographic, uh, distribution. Um, requirement. I just feel like it doesn't work without that. And so while this is a great provision, if it's not right, it shouldn't be changed until it's right to go into the. Into the charter. It's a permanent document, so it ought to be right. And I'm happy to answer anybody's questions because I know I'm talking about a technical term. It's sort of a lawyer thing. I feel strongly if it's not right, it shouldn't go into the charter until it is right.
Basically what you're saying is we can't find a representative who meets district. The council with a two thirds vote, uh, majority. A, a two thirds majority can override the requirement for that.
Right.
Somebody who may not be, or maybe from the same district as somebody else.
Yes, because otherwise you have a problem because then you'll have two and two and you won't have. Um, you know, three, you won't have an odd number, so you can't take proper votes and things like that. It just doesn't work. So I feel it, it should be stricken because the provision itself doesn't work. It's a great idea. If I definitely support geographic diversity on the BET, but this, it's, the way it's drafted, it's ineffective. And so I think it should be stricken until it sticks. I know you don't, you know, Steve's making faces, but Steve, we don't have a situation, you know, we can't find somebody from district E for some reason. There ought to be a way where council can say, okay, well, there's another candidate that could take that seat for the time being.
Is there further discussion? This, the Josie Eichner?
I understand Ms. Shanahan's point and I do think it's something that I wish had been raised earlier, but I think that getting the, um, representation by each district. Is crucial. Um, I think it's a problem we've had with the BET and I think we need to fix it. Um, and certainly. Given the caliber of people that we have in the city and each district, I think that ultimately it's a problem we can overcome. It is our most important. Commission and one where I think we prioritize getting people on board and so. Um, I think ultimately it's unlikely to be. It's, it would be good to have, I think the next charter commission should fix it, but I don't think that it is something that will keep the BET from operating. And so I prefer to see the provision pass at this time.
Further comment or discussion?
I guess I just want to make the point, it's just. I think Nora and I both being lawyers, we just re-bristle at the idea of putting something in that we know isn't. Right. And it's just best to put it in the proper way than to put something in we know has. A fa- what I consider can be a fatal flaw. I mean, I think. It won't happen often, but if it happens, then we're stymied and we don't have, it's in the charter. This is our most important document. So I feel pretty strongly that. You don't put something in that you know has a flaw.
Mr. Wiggins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Shanahan, can you please like explain to me? How would it looks? How would it look if, if this was to happen? So if you have two. So you're saying if, if someone is not willing to serve?
If you're, if the mayor is able to find people from district A, B, C, and D. But they can't find anybody who seems to want to do this job from district E. What I am suggesting is that the council should have on a, on a two thirds vote saying, oh, well, we can have two people from district B. Um, we can't seem to find anybody at this time that would, uh, be the representative of the BET in district E. So there's not a fail safe. Just in case for some reason you can't find a candidate in a certain district. And you just don't ever want to be in a situation where you can't fill a seat on the most, on the probably most important, um, commission. So it's just, it's just a mistake. We just made a mistake in drafting it, if you ask me, and. It's an easy fix and it ought to be fixed and it's definitely advisable that we have. A representative from each district, but it doesn't work unless you have. A fail safe in case for some crazy reason you can't find somebody and then what happens? So then you'd have maybe only four members because you can't find that fifth member and then you have the tied. Tied BET and you can't get proper votes and things like that. So I just don't think we should change something in a way that would. We know has a fatal flaw within the way we've structured it.
And it's, and it's basically, it would be nowhere around getting that extra sheet filled.
No, if you really can't find somebody to take that seat, if somebody really doesn't raise their hand, the mayor can't find anybody.
And, and is it possible to find? Not find people from two districts, right? Right? So say, say.
Well, it's a two thirds vote, so.
So it wouldn't be a big issue, but it's still, my point is it's still. Like it would be kind of hard to even have, we, we want a full, we want a full slate, right? So it's two people because of the. The district, yeah, so I, I get what you're saying.
So it's just, just a way to fix it.
Further comment or discussion? Uh, Mr. Frere?
Uh, yes, um, I support this because this is, was, one of my first, uh, concerns was that we would have trouble finding. People with qualifications from each one of the districts. I think, uh, Ms. Shanahan's, uh. Solution is, 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 uh, solves that problem that, uh, we should not be faced with. Being sure somebody on the BET because we came from a quali- qualified person in each one of those, uh, districts. So I think this is a good solution and I agree that it was a mistake at the beginning. That, uh, the way it was worded. So I, I support this, uh, solution.
Ms. Josie Eichner?
Sorry, again, and just to reiterate, uh, you know, again, I, I hear Ms. Shanahan's concerns. I do think a fail safe is added, given that, um. The BET, to the best of my knowledge, has never really struggled to find people and that. If we don't do this now, then this is not going to be included for probably another five years. I think. It is better that we get this. You know, distribution of members on the BET because I do think that that is. You know, a priority for making sure that we have, again, this body that is. Extremely powerful in the city needs to be fairly representative, um, and it's one of the many. Challenges that I think we've had with that body that it's not. So I think that priority. It needs to take precedence and again, if we had a history of having trouble filling the BET, I'd be more worried, but I have never known us to have trouble. Um, finding people who want to serve on that. Commission.
Mr. Burnett and Ms. Smith?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to, uh, provide commentary to that last comment. I've served on the BET for two different cycles and we have had several seats vacant. So yes, there is a, an issue with filling the seats on the BET. Once individuals find out. The amount of work. Associated with the BET, the length of the meetings. The, the, the amount of. Expertise that is expected. To address the issues that become, uh, before the BET. Yes, there is, there is no waiting. There is no one waiting in line saying, I want to be on the BET. We have issues. And I'm sure the mayor doesn't have to comment, but. You know. Whoever sits in that seat, it is a challenge to go out. To find individuals that have the expertise. To sit on the BET to, to address the issues that come before the BET. So. From personal experience, yes, we have issues filling the seats. And, uh, I, I wish we had identified, uh, with council member. Shanahan is bringing up to, uh, add to the BET, but I do support the fact that. Restricting it by districts will put us in. A, a very difficult situation if we cannot identify the correct expertise out of that district. That that seat on the BET will remain vacant. Which puts additional pressure and stress on the infrastructure and the work of the current members sitting on the BET. With, uh, one vacancy, two vacancies, three vacancies. Because we can't find. Someone to raise their hand and make the commitment. And, and I won't even bring up the word compensation because there is no. As it relates to the BET. So yes, we do have issues with, uh, finding, uh, those that wish to volunteer to serve on the BET. We can, uh. Recruit and promote and share the importance of the commission. But still it comes down to the individuals who can free up the time. And make the commitment and have the passion to serve on the BET to do the job right.
Ms. Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, actually, thank you very much for that, Mr. Burnett, because I really, really was feeling very strongly that it's.
Uh, that it's, it's important that we hold out for, um, a, a member from each district. I think that that's important, that each district is representative. But, um, you know, that's a, that was a very, uh, persuasive, uh, statement that you just made. So, uh, I'm gonna support this.
Further discussion or comment? Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I was gonna say in short to Greg's point, I mean, if the require, the require, the requirement sounds fair in principle, but in practice, I think it can undermine. Representation deficiency of districts can't keep the quota further than, uh, creating challenges for the board to do its work. Thank you.
Further comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Dixon?
Mr. Burnett.
Uh, excuse me, again, for clarity.
Say voting yes is, uh, asking, uh, voting in favor of the amendment.
To, yeah, to strike.
Favor to strike.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Najolski Eichner?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Seed?
No.
Mr. Wiggins?
No.
Ms. Young?
Pass.
Ms. Young? I'm sorry, you said pass? Thank you. Um, Ms. Edie?
No.
Ms. Winterstrand?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Frayer?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
No. Seven days.
So the motion is eight to seven in favor of the motion put forward by Ms. Shanahan.
So for the record, that retains the current status of membership for the BET.
Any further discussion?
So then we vote on the. So then, uh, we make a vote.
I got it.
As cemented. Yes.
Got it. When, um, I, I just. Kind of, it's just kind of on principle. Uh, I want to move to the strike section, uh, three dash four, A, one and two. But in terms of, um, the four year terms with mayor and council and councillor, and I'll have to speak to that. As the Florida, yeah. Um, so the point of that is, is that. I spoke to a lot of people these last couple of months. And even in these last couple of weeks, and I feel like. This is something that's really going to be problematic and it's going to seem like the council, which is. The democratic controlled council is just going up for a power grab. And, um, I just don't think that there's. There's enough. And I mean, we talked a lot about perception here and I just, I feel like even though. It might be good, I feel like the perception out there that this is, and maybe a lot of, a lot of this in the chart is really like. We're just going up for a power grab. And I, I just think that speaking. For the people, I think that it's, it's good to bring that up, that this is something that we're going to challenge. Um, we're going to have a challenge for because people are going to just seem like. We're just going for a power grab now. And I, I just again, it's probably not going to pass, but I just think that is worth bringing up and maybe have it the dialogue.
Let me ask, you're making a motion to strike three dash four, A, one and two?
Yeah.
Which is the four year term for the mayor and the council?
Yeah.
Further discussion of that item? Mr. Juski.
Um. I'm really wrestling, I gotta be honest, um. To Jalen's points, I feel like there has been an enormous amount of discussion. I think this body has put an enormous amount of time in. And I think we have just watched over the last hour, basically everything important that this charter was doing unravel. And so quite frankly, I think I may be a no vote on the entire charter at this point. Um, I'm not sure that it is, um. I'm not sure that the changes that it makes are significant enough to be worth moving forward. Um, and so I take Jalen's point on the four year term, uh, part of it. I don't know that, um. Framed without. You know, other attempts to correct the historical imbalances in this charter to correct the ways in which it does not empower. All of our communities to correct the ways in which it places the majority of the power in the hands of an unelected. Board, which is not even now representative of the entire city. I'm not really sure that there's much in common with voting for, um, to be perfectly honest. So. Uh, I will join Jalen in the motion. I'm not really sure that we can frame the four year term. In a way that we can say that we have put forward the best possible revisions for the city. Um, at this point in time.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Ms. Jen.
I guess one of the things that I think about a four year term is that it is a good idea, certainly, um, for the mayor. You know, the way with a two year term, we're constantly. Um, campaigning, aren't we? And, um, when you come into office, you're actually executing the budget of the previous mayor. And when you, at the end of your term, you've proposed a budget that will be executed by the next mayor, which may or may not be you. And I feel as though you really don't have the ability to have a, a four year term when you, um, hire people for periods of time. You have policies that you see through for a period of time, you have budgets that you see through for a period of time. So. It's a very short term, um, vision that you have for the city as mayor, if you really only have a two year term. So. I've always thought that a four year term for the mayor in particular is a good idea because of the vision, the vision thing. And the ability to, um, budget for more than just a year or two. And similarly for council, I think when you first get on council, your first year, you're just learning how. Um, the ropes are pulled and then you become effective maybe in your second or third year. So I do see, um, good reasons to support a four year term because I think it does. Bring about, uh, more effective, uh, elected leadership.
Further discussions or comment? Mr. Seed.
I think, and, and I definitely understand your point and that's why I kind of wrestle with it because I thought it was a good thing, but I think. That just like, maybe like twenty minutes ago, we were just talking about how, like, the compensation wasn't a good thing because. Um, the perception of it. And I feel like I, I've heard it and we've all heard the perception around the four year term and really like, um. Just the perception that this is just a power grab. And I think that that's where the messaging is to get this passed. I feel like that's, that's the problem, um, is that we. Um, I feel like that's the perception that this is going to be a hard time, a hard thing to pull. I mean, that's. The campaign is already started against it. So I just think that we gotta be proud of that.
Mr. Yohan, uh, Mr. Lopez.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. We've had many workshops. We, we've spoken with several people from other cities on the pros and cons of a four ma- of a. Four year term for mayor. Jalen keeps saying perception. Perception is not reality. People will look at this as a power grab. It's not a power grab. It's based on, um, it's based on organization, it's based on the vision, the, the ability for the vision to see out. Uh, for the mayor to see out some of the thing projects, huge projects that, um, that, that, uh, have been put forward. So that's what I want to say. Perception is not reality. If people really look and go back and watch the videos to see the questions that were asked. They should come to that understanding that perception is not reality. And the reason as to why we, we actually are proposing four year term for mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yeah, um, I think one more comment along those lines and I may be picking up on Mr. Levin's comments is. You know, this really is a question for the voters and this can be separated out as a single vote. You know, as a single question, so that it really puts it to the voters and it's not a power grab because the voters are going to decide. We're not deciding to power.
Sorry, I had to cut you off, but my point to that is. The same to Mr. Lopez, we were just talking about perception when it came to pay. And that was the reason why we didn't vote for it because the perception was that. We were looking like we were giving ourselves a, a pay increase. But now that we're talking about something that we're in favor of, the perception is not reality. And then to, to your point is that we let the voters decide, the voters account to us about minority representation. Why don't we let their mo- the, the, let the voters decide that? So I think that that's where it's, it's sometimes into people that's watching and even to me myself, it just seemed disingenuous. Um, and it's not to be petty, but it just seems disingenuous because a lot of the arguments that we had against di- different things. Now are being used against this, um, because it's like we're in favor of. And I feel like the people watching, I just think that that's problematic, um. Because we, we need to, we can't, if it's good for one thing, it's good for everything. And I think that we just have to declare with that. Um, and again, I'm not against the four year term. I believe that it's the right thing to do. But if we're like saying perception is reality, then we gotta talk about previous votes as well.
Mr. Juski Eichner and then Mr. Lopez. And, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Ms. Ayers first. You haven't had a, a comment on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I just don't know what I'm participating in tonight. We did our due diligence. We had hard discuss- discussions, both in public and in caucus. We made concessions and now we are at the tenth hour and the rabbit has. Has lost his mind. Everybody is going which way. We have forgotten the discussions that we have had. We have forgotten. All of the work that we put in to get a document that we can. Eighty percent agree on. And now it's time for it to go to the public. And we have all backtracked and, and, and done all this warming stuff, which is discon- it, it's disheartening. To say the least. Um. I, I just don't understand how my colleagues with a straight face can stand before the public and say. I want a four year term, but I don't agree with compensation because it's not a good time for taxpayers. Well, who says a four year term is a good time for taxpayers? And it is not about being strategic at all. We can also use the same argument. We can also apply the same argument of being strategic. Around compensate, compensate, compensation. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm very disappointed in us a- as a collective. That we will just throw the work that we did and it was not easy work. Nights that we sacrificed, hours that we cannot get back. To put something together and now because people, I don't, I, I, I don't know what it is and I, I don't wanna. I want to say egos, but I, I don't know if that's the right. Thing to call it, but now we're here in, in all of a sudden, everybody, because the light is on you now. Everybody is squeamish. Um. I wasn't for, and I've been consistent. I was not for a four year term, but through conversations with several people. We, as a group, had an understanding that we could not ask for people to do more. Without understanding that we had to give more. But now we want this, but we don't want that. So. I, I will not support a four year term for mayor and I will not support a four year term. For council. And you can say it's perception, you can say I don't understand strategy, you're all both wrong with that. It's simply because we keep, why, why did we do the work if we're going to sit here now at the twelfth hour? And undo what we have already done. And to Nora's part, part, point. Everybody keeps saying, oh, we could do a charter revision. It costs money to do a charter revision. So if you guys are so fiscally concerned. And so fiscally, uh, astute. You're willing to spend money to do another charter revision before the ten year recommendation? Where, where's your fiscal sense then? When you could address some of this stuff now and allow the people to have their day. And allow the people to cast their ballot. So I, for that in many other ways. I, I'm gonna say I'm gonna vote against this, but I am really disappointed in us as a collective. That we are deciding at this meeting to all be squirmish and go all over the place. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Juski Eichner and then Mr. Lopez.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and. I think, you know, I, I want to go back to Jalen's point and also to Ms. Ayers, you know, again. If, if one thing should be up for the voters, then all of it should be up for the voters. I think that, um. You know, and again, and I do agree with machine and hand, I actually think the four year term is a very important thing. I think it is a, I think it is in the best interest of the city. Um, but as Ms. Ayers said, I thought we had spent a great deal of time reaching a variety of compromises that attempted to, um. To pair that with other things that would, you know, improve the process. Um, for residents of the city. And again, and to give people the option. To give people, you know, who are concerned about a four year term or council and mayor, to give them minority party representation to alleviate some of those concerns. Right? I mean, I think part of the goal here was to strike some balance. Um, and I do think. For your term, be better for the city. I think that as Ms. Shanhan so eloquently pointed out. Um, there is a lot that needs to be accomplished and you need someone in office for more than two years. You need someone not running all the time. You need an ability to budget. For a couple of years in advance. Um, but I think that, uh, it is a little late to have put everyone through this. To be revoting on things. And it does leave us in a position where we are giving voters a choice on one issue and not on the others. And I do suspect that that will end up causing it to fail as well. I don't know. And that is again, it seems like a tremendous. Um, and frustrating missed opportunity. Um, so, yeah. I don't know. I think that we, we really should. You know, possibly, you know, take a pause here and consider whether, you know, the combination of votes we have just taken tonight. Has really achieved the objectives of this council. Because I think that the, you know, what has just happened, um. Has certainly really changed this document, uh, as a whole in a very short period of time. And I don't know if we have really thought through and had time to process the consequences of that. So what that's worth.
Mr. Lopez.
Hmm, hmm. Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna say that you can't, you gotta be careful to counsel and see if you're drawing a false equivalency. Voting in favor of compensation, voting in favor of four year terms are completely two different things that require two sets of criteria. So that's my thinking. So you, when the logic doesn't apply to one thing, um, with the logic that applies to one item. Doesn't always apply to the other. These decisions have to be made individually. That's the way that I'm approaching this. Thank you.
Further comment or discussion, Ms. Weather, or Weather.
Thank you, Winterstrand. Um, I just want to, I want to make a couple of general comments and a few specific comments. Um. I was, had the honor of being appointed to this council in October. Um, it's been a tremendous privilege and an honor to work with all of you. And I feel like I've been in a real learning position, uh, particularly being able to participate in the charter, um, process. And. Uh, addressing specifically this item of the four year term. I have been listening, I've participated in every workshop, I've conferred with people, I've listened and learned from all of you. And the, uh, the rationale for a four year term makes the most sense to me. Based on what I've learned from my colleagues and particularly Ms. Najolski Eichner, who I really took in what you said about. How long it takes to learn this role and how to be effective. And to, uh, form really good working relationships. And that's been, that's been a very big, uh, focus for me. So I wanted to say that, and I wanted to mention about the, um, minority party representation. That part of my thinking on this is the feedback that I got from constituents that by, um. That they actually wanted more seats than two at large, to have true minority party representation. In the district. So that was part of my, my thinking on that vote. I just wanted to put that out there. Um. And I do support the four year, uh, mural and council term because I think it gives continuity. I think we're able to work on things, see through, see things through and be much more effective for the city.
Ms. Stone?
Uh, yeah, um. I, I actually agree with Nora, uh, you know, about the fact that. I, I, I remember having a conversation with her. I think I brought this up before about how, you know, you're in office for. A year and then people are running again. And I didn't really understand that coming from where I came from, the independent. Area, you know, the political. Um, but I guess my concern is without. Um, term limits, like if we had term limits, I would be in favor of the four year term, but. You know, given that somebody could be president or, or mayor or whatever for- forever. I, I do have those concerns. And so I am not in favor of a four year term. In the absence of term limits. And I know that's a state thing that the state has to decide that. We are allowed to have term limits. Just, that's unfortunate. Otherwise I would vote for it, but right now I'm a no.
Further comment or discussion? Okay, we'll call the vote so everybody understands what we're voting on. We are voting uh, a yes vote means we eliminate the four year term for mayor and council. A no vote means that the four year term for mayor and council is moving forward. Am I correct? So yes, you're voting to eliminate. No, you're voting to keep this item as a referendum item.
Mister Burnett?
No.
Mister Goldstein?
No.
Mister Lopez?
No.
Miss Najelski Eichner?
Yeah.
Miss Smith?
No.
Miss Ayers?
Yes.
Mister Sead?
Yes.
Mister Wiggins?
Pass.
Miss Young?
Yes.
Miss Edie?
Yes.
Miss Winterstrand?
No.
Miss Dunn?
Yes.
Mister Sutton?
No.
Mister Mister Frere?
No.
Miss Shanahan?
No.
We have five.
I think we had.
Oh, pass. I'm sorry. Mister Mister Wiggins, apologies. Mister Wiggins?
No. No, yeah, I passed. But I'm I'm just thinking, I'm still. What's what's the numbers? That's probably my, mine is not gonna make a difference. Oh, yeah. Oh, so let me just, I I'll say now.
I'm sorry?
I know.
You're a no. Okay. Uh, Mister Wiggins is a no.
And Miss Young, I believe, is a, or she didn't pass.
So we have one, two, three, four, five. We have five who said yes. And the rest is may, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten.
So the motion made by Mister Sead does not pass, which means item three dash four, A, one and two remain as an item. Correct? Is there any further discussion?
No, so I think now we go on the entire, unless there are no more amendments. And if anyone has any comments on the insider.
Right.
Charter.
The Wiggins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, so if we all to say, we gonna say no to the charter, wh- what will be the next steps? I'm I'm curious to know.
The uh, next step is you go home and have a drink.
That means.
It's over. If you vote no, you'd have the final say.
So that means the city wasted a lot of money.
I think I did pretty good work, but the uh, no, it means that it means all the work that had been done would be for naught. Sure.
I I I I I think that that, Mayor, I I think, thank you for that question, uh, Mister Wiggins. And I I I I, you know, as a council, I'm feeling a little discouraged and disappointed. I think I'm feeling similar to what Miss Ayers has has expressed and Miss Eichner, Najelski Eichner. I politics and 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 is 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 a fickle thing, and I think we just proved it today, this evening. It's unfortunate because we've looked at a document that has not been updated substantively or significantly or in a way that brings us up to current times. We sat down and listened to other cities who are much farther ahead as far as their structure is concerned and 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 how they govern. And and this seems like a missed opportunity. And to think that for us to get to that next point is going to cost us money is is a concern and 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 is a sad choice, I think, at this point. But I, you know, but again, we voted our minds and I guess this is where we end up, but we'll see where the voters, you know, take this or where this leads us, but I um, i- it it's telling about where we are and in this particular year and the decisions that we decided to make because of pressure um, or of us getting our seats back. And I think it's beyond that and it's bigger than all of of that. And um, I thank Mister Mednick for your time and your expertise, but I thank everybody here too, because you all put in yeoman's work, all those who presented um, ideas that you thought would move the city forward in a meaningful way. Um, it's a lot of hard work. And I I say kudos, kudos to all of you, all of us as a as a council, but we've gotta step back, you know, when we have that drink tonight and so moving forward to say, what did we do? And why did we do it? What led us to make those decisions? And so um, I don't know if we say job well done, but we did the work. And thank you to all of you who really put in all that work and came to all the meetings and um, did your due diligence and we tried to do, we tried to make some changes. But we'll be here again, and I don't know how many years, five more years, we'll be back here again. There may not be any of us. It may be a few of us, but um, we did what we did and we voted, but thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Irene, for sitting through this process with us. It wasn't easy, but we did it. I'm done.
Miss Edie.
Thank you, Mayor. I um, I'm just have a quick question, really. Can we just put all the questions on the ballot and let the voters vote?
Yes.
Oh, or can we, can we? Can we re-vote and and?
Okay, I was just a question.
Yeah, can we, can we do, could I, I make a motion to reconsider the items that we voted down? Is that, I mean, it seems like we should be able to do that.
That's procedural. I think the vote was taken.
What's the answer? I can't hear.
We've done it. We've done that before.
We've done that before. I was, I was, I was there.
Right. Why can't we do a motion to reconsider?
I mean, just on the principle that we said, like, we didn't let the voters decide. I I just feel like that should, we should be able to do that.
Well, while we all asking questions, I have a question to rock, to raise. Didn't we know prior to coming to this table tonight that if we voted it up or down, it was going to allow um, the the citizens to see it or not see it? So we're voting to reconsider exactly what? Are we changing our vote? Or we're just voting to reconsider because we now feel bad? It is eight? What time is it, people?
Thirty, eight twenty-three.
Eight twenty-three. And we have sat with this document. And again, thank you, Mister Mednick. We have sat with this document for at least three, three to four months. I really think longer than that. I think since the beginning of the year. And now at this hour, we're saying, oh, no, we need to reconsider and let everybody vote. We could have did that in the beginning. What, what are we doing, colleagues?
But I mean, we we've done that before. I mean, I don't.
I think, I think there's a protocol that we should be raising our hands. Uh, I mean, I had my hand up. Thank you.
But I was still talking.
I I don't understand the 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 notion to reconsider. We we just debated the item. We just conducted a reasonable vote. Are we reconsidering because text messages have been sent across the table to other council members and they're changing their vote? Come on. We just voted. We are done. And if the motion to i- is is because individuals have received text messages to change their vote, well, then shame on us. But we have voted. A decision has been made. And now we're on to our final vote on the overall charter. That's where we're at.
Mister Wiggins?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I just wanna say, um, before I was in this council, I've seen the council re-vote on items and Greg, you were part of that, that meeting as well. So uh, if if there's a motion to re-vote, I I think we should consider it, even though I disagree with it, by the way. Um, but I could understand why that is. When I'm looking at this document and I'm looking at, you know, the votes and how we went through this process, everyone did not get an opportunity to see, you know, this is why I disagreed too, but see how the votes would be, right? During this whole process, it was a compromise. People voted a certain way because it was a compromise. And I could understand it. Once again, I disagree, but I got a couple more. I got a couple more minutes here. So that's just my thoughts.
Um, Miss Dunn set her hand up for a long time.
I haven't, but um, so this is just a different perspective from from me is that I actually like the fact that everybody's kind of coming from different places and and voting differently. And and honestly, it's the first time I've seen this out of this council. Um, and I feel like people are actually voting the way they feel. Um, and I think that have, again, having another vote, people may change their minds based on pressures otherwise, but I really appreciate when voting happens based on, you know, you're elected because people trusted you um, for where you're coming from. And I appreciate, even if I disagree with you, but I, you know, I do like that it is not unanimous and one way. Um, and I and I think it it speaks well for all of us, and I think all of us should own the way we vote. And I feel very comfortable personally when people come and speak to me about why did you vote for this? Yes or no? And I feel very strongly that I stand on my own decisions for my own vote in the best interest of my constituents. And if they don't like it, they can vote me out. I don't, I don't care. But I hope that I'm representing them well and I'm not gonna be swayed by, thank goodness, a party affiliation or clubs or or whoever is gonna try to sway me. Um, and so thank you for voting individually when you have, guys. I appreciate it. So it's a positive.
We don't have city council present. Um, so I would ask Mister Mednick um, under Mason's rules, a vote was discussed, a a vote was debate, or I'm sorry, issue was debated and voted upon? And does that mean that's a final issue at this meeting?
I don't have Mason's, but.
I didn't bring Mason's, but we had this issue come up at the Charter Commission recently. And Mason's has a more liberal view of reconsideration than Roberts Rules does, for example. Uh, and I don't know if you have within your um, council rules, anything to do with um, reconsideration. Is that addressed in your, in your council rules? Anybody know whether it's in your council rules? If it, if the council had a rule, that rule would govern. But under Mason's, a little different than Roberts. In Roberts Rules, it requires somebody who was on the prevailing side to move for the reconsideration. Mason's is silent on that. So the motion for reconsideration, as I understand Mason's, and I'm not an expert on Mason's, it's the only town, the only city that I work with that uses Mason's, which I think is far better than Roberts. Um, I think you can do a reconsideration, um, especially at the same meeting.
So how does that work, Mister?
Rules with us. I I appreciate the fact that you don't have them with us.
Yeah, I don't have the rules with me.
And uh, I mean, my thought is that the issues were thoroughly debated debated. And that um, if that was debated and voted on, that would seem to me to be at this meeting anyway, a final decision. Mister Josie.
I just pulled, there's a copy of Mason's. If you'll give me two seconds, I will see if I can find the.
Mister Mayor, as I Googled, um, it, Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure states that there are no time limits with the motion to reconsider, other than the practical limits of the item being within the reach of the assembly. It doesn't give you, if, like, you can't do it. It's a very, I think, a very vague answer to the question.
My question um, for Mister Sead is what is the motion to reconsider? Are you reconsidering all of the votes?
Oh, you have to go individually, wherever one was voted one way or the other. If one was voted in the affirmative and somebody wants to make a motion to make that a, to reconsider that. And if something was voted in the negative and somebody would wanna make a motion, so it has to be, it can't be all. It has to be each individual item that was voted. Mister Burnett and then Mister Wiggins.
Thank, thank you, Mister Mayor. I I guess my unvaguiness is we just conducted a series of votes based upon information that we had received. And now we have a motion to reconsider, but no new information has been brought forward to us that would, in my mind, foster a change in that vote. I mean, if there's information that's been shared amongst individuals and our our own record via text messages, then it should be shared with us all to possibly reconsider, but that has not occurred. So the motion to reconsider is based upon what? What in new information has been shared with all council members that would merit us revisiting our vote? Nothing has been brought to my desk.
All right, speaking since I made it. Mister Josie Eichner, did you find something that?
Um, I did not find something that clarified. I wanted to speak to Mister Burnett's point, but if Mister Sead wants to speak to it first.
Yeah, just since I've mentioned it, literally I had a thought uh, of something that was said of that we let the voters decide. And that was a discussion that that we had, and I believe that's why we see he made her point, is to, if we're gonna let the voters decide on one issue, and I believe I turned back over to, to, on council person, I'm Najelski Eichner. He's like, we're picking and choosing what voters get to decide on, and we should just let them decide on on everything. So that, that's why I would, I would do it on those bases. Um, but I'll turn it over to Mister.
My hand's getting tired. Like, I'm holding up for five minutes now. Thank you, Mister Mayor. But I I think what's important is to get an understanding of, you know, who would, like, why waste the time? Most majority of people don't wanna, you know, um, you know, re-vote. Uh, would it be a waste of time for you, for us to even do that? Um, to to Greg's point, it's like, I'm not, I'm not gonna change my votes. Can we get a vote on who's willing to change their vote, right? And it, why waste our time?
Mister Josie. So I just wanna be clear to Mister Burnett's point that I have no additional information by text message either. I think that my point, following up on Mister Seed's point, was that um, the shape of what has happened has significantly changed the shape of this document. So each individual vote taken in um, yeah, the sum total of that is now made this a very different document. And I think that the point that was made about um, uh, in relation to the four year term about allowing the voters to decide, potentially maybe relevant to some folks to reconsider whether we regret having decided to keep the voters from deciding a number of other issues if we're gonna take the position that the voters should decide. So it may or may not change. I genuinely have no idea whether the reconsideration vote is likely to come out differently or not. Um, but I do think that the, again, the sequence of what has happened here um, may cause some folks to think about whether they are happy with how they voted in the first instance. I don't know. Um, I I'm still trying to figure out the question of whether we can.
A little reluctant to have a reconsideration unless we have firm uh, uh, firm statements or firm uh, ability to do that or authority to do that under Mason's rules, which governs the council.
But that's been done on the council. That's been done, uh, multiple times.
We don't know. If it's been done in the past, it it might have been done in Aaron. We don't know.
We should, we should have considered that. We should, we should have considered that.
Um, so I don't think we can rely on this council.
No, they're not our councils.
I mean, this is something, it's just not appropriate.
It was debated and voted on. But unless there's clear and convincing language in Mason's that would allow a reauthorization or re-vote, I think what we'd have to do first is to vote on.
I feel very, I mean, I'd just like to say that I feel very uncomfortable making this decision without appropriate, without appropriation council. I, I, you know, we've got council members advising us as to how, whether or not this vote's proper. I don't feel comfortable with that.
If, if I can make a comment, um, I have never seen this council. I mean, eight years, Mr. Burnett, you've been here eight years as well. I've never once seen a reconsideration on a vote ever.
I, I think we might have had a couple of items that we reconsidered, voted on, but that was based upon additional information brought to the attention of the council. It wasn't just, we take a vote and five minutes later, let's reconsider that vote. Additional information was brought to the attention or shared with the council, all council members, which forced it to reconsider what we just voted on. That has not occurred yet.
When I speak to that, uh, that, that's not, that's not true.
So, section four sixty-four, who may move to reconsider? Um, and it is common practice to, sorry, so, um, uh, sixty-four, six-four, parliamentary procedure does not restrict the making of a motion to reconsider to a member who voted on the prevailing side of a question sought to be reconsidered. So in essence, anyone in the legislative body, unless there is a rule restricting it, can make a motion to reconsider.
Wait, it says on the prevailing side?
So it's, no, so that's not, so it does not restrict someone who is on the prevailing side to make the motion. No, and you do not have to be on the prevailing side to make that motion.
That was my understanding under Mason's. It's different than Roberts, and Roberts you do. Um, and if you had, that's why I asked, if you had a rule in your council rules that, um, dealt with this issue, if there's no rule, then I think Mason's is a more liberal approach to reconsideration. And it's permitted on the same, um, at the same meeting. Um, and, uh, that was my recollection, just looking at it again, kind of refresh my recollection.
So basically, according to Mason, we can have a vote to reconsider.
The sound is not finalized.
Till the final action is taken on the entire document.
And so it would have to be each item that anybody wants to reconsider would be a separate vote.
That's correct.
Well, wait, first you would vote to reconsider it, and then you would take the vote again. So first you have to have the votes. So the first thing we do is we vote to whether or not we're going to reconsider. And then the second vote would be on the vote again. Yes, and the form.
Nikki's hand is up. I'm sorry, go ahead, Nikki. I'm sorry. Thank you so much, Darlene. Um, you would have to vote to reconsider. You would have to do it each item. So each item that we have already voted on, you would have to ask for a vote or reconsider, consideration. You cannot do it in a lump sum. That's my first point. My second point is, I know that everybody at that table is learning, has a specialty, but I'm, I'm not familiar with any of them having a background in parliamentary procedures. So to support what the mayor has said, I think we are on, in uncharted grounds. And our next move needs to be very careful because we are now setting a precedent. And this precedent that you're about to set can be either good or it could be bad. And nobody in there, from my knowledge, has any type of certification of parliament, that they are, uh, uh, parliamentary procedures. I do think, um, Nora, for reading what Mason says, but the importance of having someone that is diverse in parliamentary procedures, because they help you, um, translate or understand exactly what the policy is saying. So I, I, I need to caution us to go forward if we're not gonna have that expert level person giving us all the same information and all the same knowledge at the same time.
Mr. C D?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with what, what Ms. Ayers just said, and I just wanna be clear for the record. I did not ask for anyone to reconsider their vote. All I suggested was, can we put all the questions on the ballot and let the voters vote for everything? That's the only thing I suggested. I don't know if it can be done or not. That's why I asked the question. But I didn't ask anyone to change their vote. Thank you.
And Mayor, I, I might, yes, um, I feel that, um, Ms. Ayers actually, um, very well, um, described my concerns too, that I don't think that we have Corporation Council in the room to properly advise us about this. I think that we are setting precedents, and it's very concerning to me about taking another vote, especially when we've had an extremely full debate over, I don't know how many, three or four weeks, we've, we've considered all these types of things. We've taken votes. I think that we should live with how we voted. Very uncomfortable with this. Yeah, I agree. Well, I will say that the form of the motion on section four, six, five is a move to reconsider the vote. So as everyone has said, the first thing that would have to be done is to take a vote on whether to reconsider. And so I don't see what the problem is in taking the vote on whether to reconsider. That would answer the question as to whether there is an appetite to reconsider.
And Mr. Mednick, do you agree with that? So is there a motion on the floor?
Would you like me to read it?
Mr. Seed.
Yeah, I'll make the, um, motion I reconsider, um, items or section three, three D one, and section three, um, four dash eight.
Sorry.
Three one and three.
Sorry, I think that would be three, three, wait, three point three C two.
Sorry.
And three, four, eight.
There's been a motion on the floor to reconsider the vote that was taken on item dash, uh, item three dash three D one and three dash four A. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Could we read it into the record, please?
Specifically what?
Uh, the, the item regarding minority party representation and adding two members to the council.
For the record, it is three dash three C two and three dash four A two. Those are the two sections.
So there's been a motion on the floor to reconsider those items. And a further discussion. Mr. Jostke, I.
Yeah, I will just say again, I think that, um, the voters should have an opportunity to decide this issue. It is, as Mr. Seed said, uh, um, something, the number one thing that came to us. Um, it is a proposal that I particularly appreciated, Mr. Seed crafting, because it allows the authority to remain with the voters. Um, all seven members would be voted on, would be elected by the voters. And I do think that this proposal that, um, those residents of Norwalk should have the opportunity to choose whether or not it is the right approach for the city. But as supportive order, right now, we're voting on the motion to reconsider, not.
That's correct. We're not voting on the motion on the item. We're voting on the motion to reconsider.
Correct.
So if there's no further discussion, if we can have a roll call vote on that. If you vote yes, we will reconsider this item. If you vote no, the item is closed.
Mr. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Mr. Lopez?
No.
Ms. Nagelski-Eichner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Ayers?
I'm staying.
Mr. Seed?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Pass.
You said pass.
Yes.
Pass, you said pass. Ms. Young?
She's on mute.
No, sorry.
Okay. No, we're not, Ms. Young. Ms. Edie?
No.
Ms. Winterstrand?
No.
Ms. Dunn?
No.
Mr. Sutton?
No.
Mr. Frayer?
No.
Ms. Shanahan?
No.
Mr. Wiggins?
No.
So we have two.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers abstained.
Oh, Ms. Ayers abstained. I think Ms. Young said no. She said, she said no. So one, two, we have two ye- yes, two yeses. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
So the items, the vote to reconsider, the motion to reconsider that I am, has not passed. Any further discussion or motions? And now we go through this item three.
We have to vote on the whole charter.
So now the next item is item three B?
Yeah, we have to vote. We're still voting on item A.
Okay.
As a whole, as amended.
Approval or rejection in its entirety or in separate provisions, the final report of the Charter Revision Commission dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, including the responses of the recommendations of the common council. Uh, we would take a roll call vote on that.
Mr. Burnett?
So a vote, a vote no is to reject, a vote yes is to approve. Right?
Yes. So your vote is yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Goldstein?
No.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Nagelski-Eichner?
Pass.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Ayers?
Pass.
Yes. Mr. Seed?
No.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Pass.
Ms. Edie? You said pass, right. Ms. Edie?
Um, pass.
You said yes?
Pass.
Pass, okay. Uh, Ms. Winterstrand?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Frayer?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Ms. Nagelski-Eichner?
Um, yes.
Ms. Ayers?
No.
Ms. Young?
No.
Ms. Edie?
No.
Nine yays, one, two, three, six nays.
So nine yay and six no.
Yes.
Correct. So the item passes.
Correct, passes.
The number of visits is correct.
Well, now we move on to the rest. Item B, which is the language.
Item B, the language. And, uh, you can.
I will take over if, if you.
And I will, uh, let the director reflect that, uh, from this point forward, the council president will, uh, chair the meeting.
Okay, uh, so moving on to item B, approval and adoption of in accordance with Connecticut General Statute seven dash one nine one E. Thank you, Mayor. And the following question to be placed on the ballot for referendum to be held on the general election of November four, twenty twenty-five. Note, subject to modification by the common council deliberations, the ballot may include one or more questions. So what we're voting on right here is, uh, is essentially the language, which we have yet to, uh, we can vote on this because we're setting the date. Okay, so we can go ahead and vote on this, then we move to the language. Is that correct? So we can go ahead and call the vote now, or do we do this language that we're going to?
You're moving forward with the ballot questions, so you can vote on the whole thing together.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we are gonna do the ballot questions. We've all agreed. We're gonna stick it out. Okay, so we can go ahead and vote. Oh, oh, let's do a roll call. Wait, wait, I'm confused about what we're voting on because I think there's three different questions, and I had an amendment to a question that I wanted to do at least one. Um, the big one. Oh, well, we're, how do we break the questions together here tonight, correct? We have the drafts, we have the drafts from you, we can make the adjustments to them. Yes.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing right now? That's what we're doing. I don't know what we're voting on.
I thought you could vote on the placement on the ballot for November and the question simultaneously, so you should probably raise the questions.
Do the questions now. Okay. All right, so the ballot questions, can we put those up on the screen?
Resume?
Yes, thank you.
Let me, yes. I mean, the, the, the sample ballot question, uh, is before us. Needs to be mod, are we modifying this?
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing. Attorney Mednick will guide us through this.
So I emailed out to leadership a few days ago, um, a series of questions. And what I wanted to show at the top of the list, you'll see, I don't know why the ballot question equivalent shows up twice. Um, the question in twenty twenty-three was one question, and it was just a broad question. Um, and for the record, one of the other things you'll be voting on tonight, I hope, will be to have the town clerk issue a, an explanatory text that will go through every section of the charter revision, uh, so that the voters will know that as well. You're gonna be voting on it, although, um, statutorily you're required to do it. You have to publish the changes in the newspaper as well. Uh, but the, uh, we did a single question, uh, four years ago. It was the top question. I tried to manipulate it a little bit as a single question, and I'm not recommending a single question. I just, if you wanted to do a single question, the twenty twenty-five ballot question, number one, equivalent would be that. It covers, I think, a lot of the themes that are in the charter. I don't think any of the things that eliminated are, um, alter that. Questions number one, two, and three. Number two is impacted, but number one is what I call an omnibus question. I'm not saying by any stretch of the imagination that it's perfect or all-inclusive. But I tried to do, is I tried to walk through the major changes in the charter that we thought people could take a look at and get a sense of what's in the body of the charter. It's not everything else that we should probably add a provision and other items as maybe, uh, as, as have been approved. Um, but that's a, that's an exhaustive list, but it is a substantial list. Question number two was originally, I had recommended combining the, um, the issue of the two additional members um, that, that failed this evening with the four-year term. So the four-year term stands on its own. And the third question, which does remain, is the compensation question. So, um, question number one was, is an omnibus, which tries to give you a broader sense of what's in the document. Um, I do have communities, um, I believe that the majority leader, and, and maybe he'll correct me if I'm wrong, did send out all the sample questions to the members. Am I correct on that? Yeah. And so a number of communities, and I'm not advocating a position, um, uh, have sometimes put on one question, do you support the charter revision as adopted, as approved by the commission and recommended by the commission and approved by the council? Not recommending that, but some towns go for a question that's simple. Um, I have tried to encourage my towns. Um, I have tried to encourage my towns to look at the omnibus concept. Um, and so that's an explanation of what those questions are.
Um, I'd like to, um, have a conversation with you, um, Steve, about the omnibus question, I think it's too, um, I think some things ought to be teased out of it because they're, some are very, um, ministerial and some are more substantial. So I'd like to suggest that we, um, pull the BET stuff out as a separate question because that's, those are more substantive changes. Whereas, you know, just the, um, you know, some of the other framing issues are pretty straightforward. So I had suggested to, um, to leadership to, um, create a third question that would read something like this. Should the charter be revised to A, establish authority to expand the board of estimate to include a member of council as non-voting ex officio member with the, um, site to it, and B, permit separate expenditure caps on the general government and Board of Ed budget article X? Um, and then we have repeal of articles, um, eight and, is it eight or is it, um?
Thirteen.
It might be thirteen, I think that there was a typo, I think it should be thirteen and not eight, it shows up as, uh, B one, 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 but it should be, um, X. So I, I think I noted that mistake already. So in any event, I do think that we should pull the, um, BET stuff out, and I thought that we should, um, have less language, I, I thought the language was perhaps a little bit, um, suggesting an answer, I think it should be more, um, neutral, so that was the changes that I had suggested. Um, if we, um, I think that, um, Josh might have a copy of it, maybe he could send it to you so that it can be seen, I don't know, are you, can you help out with that?
Yeah, let me, let me try and do that, I mean, one thing that I do while I'm doing this though, and I'm sorry, I was impertinent and I didn't raise my hand. So I don't know if there's anyone who had their hands up before me. Um, but if not.
Not that I see.
I just, I didn't, I didn't wanna cut anyone in line if there was a line. Um. My, and I'm, Lisa, I'm sending your email from, I think it was like four fifty or something.
Yeah, somewhere around there, just to, you know, separate it out, I think it's too hard.
Josh, can you just, uh, screen share from there because this is not my computer, so you're gonna send to my email, I.
Uh, I can try if I have.
I'll take mine down.
Um, the one thing I would note, Steve, I know you and I had talked about this at one point, was about how much actual physical room there is on the ballot. Um. Because, um, you know, there were some changes to that this year. Um. As the charter revision two years ago eliminated some positions that are no longer elected offices, like selectmen, for example. And so there was a question of how much like actual real estate there is on the thing. Um. Let me show, Lisa, I think this is, this should be it.
Take a look at it. Yes.
I'm gonna zoom in. Cause I don't know if everyone can see as big as I can see it.
Yeah, it's pretty good. So the point of this, um, suggested change is just that, um, the BET stuff is more substantive than the rest of the material in that omnibus type, um, thing, so I just wanted to bring, bring attention to it, and you just rolled it up. And then, um, Josh, the repeal of the articles, and we need to fix that, um, eight, it should be, um, thirteen. That could either go back up to the ominous because it's pretty, um, it's not very substantive, or it could just be, as you said, maybe eliminated as a, um, thing that's called out.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's something that actually needs to be on the question at all, frankly.
Right.
Um. Can I stop sharing this, or does anyone need a second to look at this before I can take it down?
And I tried, I made the language tighter so that it was, um, you know.
Uh, can, am I, can I take this down, or does anyone need to see this for longer?
And if you could send it to me, uh, so I have it.
I, Steve, I emailed it to you a few minutes ago.
Thank you.
So it should be in your inbox. Um.
It doesn't need to be, I, I think my point doesn't, it doesn't seem to be on language. And. So I just, I would say that I, I do think that we had a good model, um, for a lot of these kind of clarification questions in what we did in two thousand twenty-three, you know, we, we try, we spend a lot of time trying to make it succinct, but to highlight the key things. Um, because I do think that a lot of this is ministerial, the repeal of the articles thirteen fourteen, for instance, um.
Yeah.
Uh. I also, but I'm not sure that to that point, we need to call out the BET items separately, I think that, um, I mean, that's very different than like the four-year term for mayor, which needs to be a sound question, I think that's still a level of ministerial that is unlikely to be. Um. I'm just not sure that it's, I think it's, it may end up being more confusing than helpful, I think that's the kind of level of detail that people vote know for because they don't understand and they don't really have the time to dig into. So I think we'd be much better off, um, having a, one question on the four-year term and one question on the remainder of the charter. Um, with, again, I think some tighter callouts, for instance, reducing the petition requirements, I think is something that's helpful to call out. Um, I don't know that, um, you know, I don't know that we need some of the more general facilitate public understanding of government operations, like I think a lot of that is sort of, um, more verbiage than necessary to kind of highlight the key things here, I do think we should probably highlight the name, the name change, I think that may be of interest to people. Um, I don't honestly know if anyone cares about the fact that we're appealing sheriff.
Yeah, because we didn't shoot the deputy. Um. May I put up a version of this that I took a swing at this to try and do frankly with council member, a lot of what she suggested here. Um. I'm gonna put up what I, Steve, I think I said this to you the other day. Um. The only changes I made pretty quickly on the fly are just in accordance with the amendments that were, uh, the motions tonight. I thought one thing, I think, and, and with Lisa, with the BET questions, that makes me think you want four questions on the ballot, not three. And that's where my, like, real estate point comes in. Because I don't, I literally don't know if we can fit four questions with spacing on a ballot plus all the other elected offices. And I just want you to think about that. So Nora and everyone else, take a look, the, the last two, by the way, I did no changes to the compensation question. Um, and then here, this is just the four-year term question. And there's that. And then there's the first question here, and I'm gonna zoom in here. I thought, and we can debate what we wanna do here, but I think moving up some things that the voters may want to know about first, I think it's just, you know, it's just primacy. And I think we, I mean, I gave a couple of suggestions, but people can move things that they want, obviously, but I do think that, um, putting what we want people to see first, first um, is important, um, to, and I think that's in sort of tandem with council member Najelski-Eichner's point. Um, I did change, I did remove the sheriff thing because, for exactly the reason. And then I moved up the BET stuff to the top here. Um.
I have a little bit of a problem with that language on A, just because I think that that, um, you know, assumes a conclusion that maybe not everybody feels. And, you know, for instance, I voted against that. Um, and would vote against this whole question no based upon that. Um, and especially because we're saying establishing greater public accountability and participation, well, that's a judgment. And, um, to expand public understanding, that's also a judgment, I'm not sure if I really, I, I think that we're putting judgments in there about what this is accomplishing.
Well, look, I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna make suggested revisions, I mean, by all means.
I just think that it should be, well, the way that I had suggested was just by saying to revise to permit separate expenditure caps on general government and Board of Education. I mean, just go say what it is, what it's doing. I don't love it that it's not separated, you know, a separate BET question, but I could live with the fact if we don't have all this judgment based upon, you know, built into the the question.
I'd just like to add, um, I, I do agree that we want three questions. Um, I agree with Miss Najelski-Eichner's, uh, comments, uh, that you had made, and I think that we just need to rework this language a bit.
Okay.
Because it's gotta be clear, it's gotta be understandable to the public what they're reading.
All right, so then, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, Josh, I, you know, strike the language that Miss Shanahan is proposing striking, I would strike B as well. I don't know that that is particularly helpful, um, and that, I mean, again, helps us shorten this up, so. Let's see if we can get this.
To permit.
To permit, yeah.
Hold on, I'm just, this is a ordinance meaning field, guys.
Yeah, there we are, right in order, where's our pencils?
Take the two out.
So just tell me, tell me. I'm sorry, I, too many, I'm sorry, what?
Take that second two out, after A. Let the word two, two, permit separate.
Okay.
There you go.
Um, to expand public understanding, here, this should be changed to B, so actually this is gonna be fixed here. Um. This will be changed to C.
Again, I don't even know, do we really need C? We, what we did in that regard is really cleanups of what we did in the, in twenty twenty-three.
Cool, out.
Yeah.
Um.
So the only point that I wanna make is that some of us might feel as though we don't like the changes to the BET, and we'd have all this other good work that really just is cleanup work included in this question, and if we encourage people to vote with us against the BET changes, we lose all this other good work, which is why I suggested we pull that BET stuff out.
Josh, in terms of real estate, um, could we get four questions in there if they're shortened?
Um, Steve?
I think you can, uh, I know some towns have done eight or nine questions, uh, but the first question's kind of long, we actually did, I asked, asked, uh, the town clerk to, uh, run question number one in its original form by the secretary, and they said, we'll send it when you adopt it. Um, which was not a very helpful answer, so I think the shortening of it makes, makes sense, so you could probably throw other questions in. The, the issue is whether you want to throw other questions in, but you could certainly do that.
Yeah. And, and that is actually helpful, because my concern, and it just wasn't answered, was that, I don't know if you remember, I mean, two years ago, we had a double-sided ballot. And it was one question, and it was kind of tight. And this time, we have fewer offices. But that was, that was just my concern, so if you think by adding shorter questions, we could potentially get a fourth one in, okay. Um. Does anyone else have any suggested changes for, and I, I, I know, Lisa, I know you have your suggestion, but should I sort of?
We go there, so this will be, um, this is gonna, I'm assuming if it's gonna be three or four questions, it's gonna be a double-sided ballot.
Yeah, I, I imagine it would be.
I don't know the answer whether there'll be a double-sided ballot if you have three or four questions, it really depends.
I would think it has to be, because the first ballot to one is mayor, council, you know, Board of Ed. Um. Like constable, you know, any other office Jalen's running for. Um, so, you know, I, there's a lot that goes on that first page of the ballot.
Yeah.
And then, so there, it has to be a second page.
Yeah, so yeah, I think if it's gonna be a second page anyway, I think we could get four.
I mean, it's very brief and clear.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So then. So then. All right. I, I guess maybe we should, as a threshold then, I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. Let's at least just answer the question of are we gonna do four questions or three questions? Because that actually seems to be the only dispute we're having right now. I think we're more, tell me if I'm wrong, but there seems to essentially be a consensus that the four-year term's gonna be its own question. There's a consensus that council pay is gonna be its own question, so we've done that work now. So now the question is, are we splitting that first question into two questions or one question? And I think instead of going around in circles, if we could at least get a consensus of where the council is, that will make our lives a lot easier, cause it's nine oh eight P M.
Okay, so I'll just like lay out why I'm suggesting Q questions, which was.
Young's trying to.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah.
But she's not, um, yeah, you're muted.
You're muted.
I think I'm talking, I'm sorry. So the BOE, I mean, the BET issue is what you'd like to see separated, right? Yeah, because I don't wanna lose, you know, I feel like all of those, um, ministerial things, that should be an easy yes. But some people might have a strong feeling about BET and then say like, oh, I'm gonna vote no for this because I don't like these BET things, but then we'll lose all that good ministerial work, I don't wanna see that work go to waste, which is why I'm making the suggestion. And that would be the fourth question then, right? That's how you wanna break it up?
Yeah.
Mister Wickens?
I'd. I kinda think that's fair, but I, I get why you're doing it, but I think that's kind of goes to the point of all the other things we were talking about. Um, separating, and I could see why Mr. C was, uh, concerned because, you know. I don't know, but I think, I, I, if that's the case, I will be in support of three, because it's a lot of other things that could have been on that ballot too. Um, if that's the case.
Well, let's get, uh, Miss Najelski-Eichner. Um, yeah, and, and I guess the, the thing I would say about this too is just that the farther into the weeds we get, the harder it is going to be for voters, right? And, you know. This, so the BET stuff, I think, is gonna be hard. If, if it's, if it's its own separate question, the, the real answer question is going to be, are voters going to?
Understand.
Have, uh, it's going to require a lot of explanatory materials and time, which may be worth doing, and I'm certainly happy to do. Um, but it does feel a little bit like, um, it does feel a little bit like asking folks to get really far in the weeds in a way that the other questions do not, right? So I'm concerned that, um, that in doing so, we are, um, that we are going to make it more challenging for voters than, than necessary, I mean, that this level of detail is not in, going to be in the other questions, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, it feels to me, to be perfectly honest, like this is a backdoor way of trying to kill something that you oppose, and that's fine if that's what you wanna do, but I would like a vote on the record on that, I guess.
I, I think that that's fair, I guess the, uh, question I had was that everybody said that, oh, well, you know, all of our constituents expect us to have some kind of say over the budget, and, um, the BET, you know, is, is, you know, running without our direction, and so I'm bringing attention to the fact that you want to change how the BET operates with council, so I thought that this was something that was important because your constituents were suggesting these changes, so if it is that important, if they are that focused in on what the BET is doing as far as, you know, what kind of, uh, council they're getting from that council, that that was giving an opportunity to highlight your points.
Um, yeah, and that's fair enough, and I mean, we can certainly do it, um, I think it, um, we can certainly do it, if that, you know, if that really, if that's how the council feels, then we can do it that way. Um. I think it's, yeah, yeah, Miss Young, go ahead.
So, um, I, I, I'm concerned about the comment, I don't know. I, I, I'm kind of feeling like I, I agree with you, Nora, it almost is now putting it out there so that it can be complicated and, and I don't know, voted down, I, 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 I don't see this, this one issue, uh, on the ballot as, as something negative. I mean, it, it, I, I think it's warranted, I, we, we, we voted on it, and I think maybe just keeping it with, um, the first one might be okay. Um, because if it gets too in the weeds, like you said, it, it is gonna be something, um, a little more challenging for voters. On the flip side, people will just probably could vote for it if we put in an explanation, but again, we've got tight space. Um, but I don't, I, I, I think the tone is kind of setting this as something that's negative already, I don't, I don't know if we wanna separate it um, at this point. So.
Can I ask, can I ask, uh, um, Councilor Goldstein, could you please bring up the, uh, language again? And, um, can we create a clear, you know, without the red line, can we, um?
Sure.
They type up the language so we can see it together? And then separately, I mean, I, I think, you know, where I come in on this is that what is gonna be the clearest and, and, um, easiest for constituents to understand?
Okay, so, so all I did was, as you can see, just turn off the redlining.
Okay.
Um. One thing, Lisa, I'm gonna put this in, this was, and I realized there's some overlap here, but just bear with me. This is the three, this is the three-question version. Based on the changes that we were, we, we just discussed, um.
Can I read it aloud, let me read it aloud so everyone can hear what it sounds like? Okay, shall the charter be revised to A, permit separate expenditure caps on the general government and Board of Education to expand public understanding? Article ten. B, changing the name of common council to city council. C, reducing petition requirements to facilitate public referenda. D, creation of a public applicant pool to publicize board and commission vacancies and encourage public. D, creation of a public applicant pool to publicize board and commission vacancies and encourage public input and participation. And E, establish authority to expand the board of estimate taxation to include a member of the council as a non-voting ex officio member.
Matt, I think we can make it even shorter by getting out to expand public understanding under A, cause I don't think that that's, that furthers the, the language and it just makes it tighter.
Okay, now, um, let me read it again because I'm just gonna share my, my perspective as I read that. Is if I'm thinking as a, as a voter and I'm reading through this where I started to kinda fall off was indeed creation of public app applicant pool. So I just wanna put that out before I, I read it again. Shall the charter be revised to A? Permit separate expenditure caps on the general government and board of education. B, changing the name of the common council to the city council. C, yeah, there's the, some verbiage problems here, um, reducing petition requirements to facil- facilitate public referenda.
Create, yeah, I should say create, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, English teachers have got it.
I'm reading aloud, so I can't do it on the fly. Um, okay, create a, take out of there. Create a public applicant pool to publicize board and commission vacancies and encourage public input and participation.
I think we can take that part out.
I think so too.
This here.
Yeah, so now cleaning it up like that makes it a little easier to understand, starting from the top. Shall the charter be revised to permit separate expenditure caps on the general government and board of education? B, change the name of the common council to the city council. C, reduce petition requirements to facilitate public referenda. D, create a public applicant pool to publicize board and commission vacancies and E.
Expand the board of the, take out all that, right? Expand B O E, the B, uh, BET.
To expand the board of estimate taxation.
You have to say establish authority to.
Right, authority, do we have to say that?
Council has to take an action.
Okay.
Alright. So create a public applicant pool to publicize boarding commission vacancies. And E, establish authority to expand the board of estimate taxation to include a member of the common council as a non-voting ex officio member.
I'd also like to suggest if you can, adding, um, a clause because there's other things in this charter. Um, these are very specific, other revisions building upon the twenty twenty three changes in the charter. So, so that the public, you know, when they see the explanatory text, they're gonna say, my goodness, there's more than five things here. So, so I would add something like, you got that, Josh?
Yeah, as well as other, I'm sorry.
Other revisions building upon the twenty twenty three charter revision.
And should it be a member of the city council? Since that is the proposal, it would be. Council until. I know it would change within that vote.
I, I'm worried that if the word, just the word, well, let's not.
Yeah, a member of the council, I like that.
Yeah, pe- people know, uh, people are aware of what the council is and the council word's not changing. I'm sorry, say that one more time.
I would put an F in front of the as well.
Alright, yeah.
Just so it's clear.
And, and I would also suggest we don't need the, um, article references frankly.
Great.
That's great. That makes it much more readable.
And how is it that, uh, people learn, you know, if they wanna learn more about what this is, like what the full changes are, it's.
There's me an explanatory text and you're also gonna publish in the newspaper, um, a, um, fairly detailed, I'll be working with, um, um, Quaid on putting that together.
And if folks remember that from two thousand twenty three, it was very detailed.
So until we can get rid of the sub A, right?
Where are you?
Two, question two, we can get rid of A in parentheses.
Yes. For the mayor, yes, the call. There you go. Okay, so forget this here because this is Lisa's four question comment here. I'm not saying forget it, I'm just saying.
No, I get you.
We need to, this is the, this would be the three question version. The, I think the thing we probably need to do is vote it out on three or four questions here. With the fourth question being a BET focused question, unless Lisa, unless you disagree, that I think would resolve this issue.
Yeah, that's it. That's simple. Cause I mean, it won't be that much, let more space because we're taking so much out of the first question. I also think that, um, the list of questions are in the wrong order. I think that we should have mayor and compensation before the longer question, which I think should be three.
I, I tend to agree with that.
Okay, I mean, I, I'm I have a different view on that, but that's.
Can I ask Attorney Mendick's perspective?
Can you put that back up again, Josh? Yeah, so it looks like Nicole has a question, so.
Yep.
Before we lose Nicole's question.
Um, with the moving of the questions, shouldn't it go in the order in which it's going to be in the charter? So that would tell you what would be question two and what would be question three, cause it should be forming some, it should follow some type of format. So would compensation come before?
I, I think we have large discretion to do that. We can choose to do it that way, but I don't think we're, we're constrained.
I'm, I'm just offering up a, a different way of thinking it.
Okay.
That it should follow, it should, it should follow a format that is already established in the charter. It should not just be what we feel. This is a, a, a serious document that has a format that we should all respect and follow. So the question should be following the format that it would be shown in the charter. That's just my suggestion.
That, that was the initial approach in question number one. It's, um, only done that way. It, it, it doesn't lay out what look like are major items and you just go through a series of things sequentially. It's the way I normally do it, uh, but there's no right way or wrong way to do it, whatever you think the flow works and, and these are the items you're highlighting, so, uh, which is not everything in the charter, so. I, I don't have a definitive answer. It's just, I, I normally would do it that way, but, uh, I have no objection to the way it's, it's being approached here.
But the first one is probably like a melee of different charter provisions and maybe not in the same order. So that probably undermines the whole theory of.
Josh?
Yep.
Mister Mednick said that there are charter revisions that are up to nine questions. Why are we trying to pick some to group together and why not? Why couldn't we separate all of them so that people have read? Pause, make a decision, read, pause, make a decision. Either they might lose the thread and.
I, I, I don't know on the real estate question, but assuming that the questions were short enough, I imagine you could do several, but that's, again, that's our call. So if that's something you're suggesting.
That's just what I would suggest so that people could actually.
I think that's, that's a strategic choice that we're gonna have to make here.
Well, and so I'm gonna push back on that, um. If anyone's ever lived in California, which is a state with, um, inordinate numbers of referendums. I am a person who loves this stuff and I can tell you that I would give up by the time I got into like the ninth item of like, I have no idea. So I think that this is a case where our, part of our responsibility as folks who are deeply in the weeds on this is to put things together that go together, that we are recommending to folks, um, you know, make sense and fit and don't need to be, you know, dug into the deep weeds on. I, you know, I'm, I felt, I think that, um, yeah, I just, I feel like when, and, and, you know, you could break it up. I mean, there's essentially, I don't even know, fifty different changes in this charter, right? At some point they have to get grouped and the more we do, the less people are gonna understand, the more they're gonna note, vote no because they feel overwhelmed or they're just not gonna answer. Um, and I don't think that is particularly productive either. Um, and I think people responded very well last time to our one sort of question that tried to encompass the whole goal of the revision process. I think people actually appreciated that and for folks who wanna get deeper in the weeds, that will be in the explanatory text, which is substantial and will allow people to dig into that.
I, I agree with Nora.
I do too for that matter, yeah. I, I'm, I'm okay with where we're at here.
Okay, um, alright, may I stop the share here?
Sure.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, so what we need to know then, um, is, you know, is everyone, uh, have a, a level of comfort here? Are we ready to take a vote? With this language that we have.
We had two samples, three questions or four?
Yes, well, we didn't break it into four, so, uh, yes, so I would like to hear your perspective on three or four questions, Mister Bennett.
Well, I, I think, well, in line with what has been communicated from Councilmember Shanahan, uh, to split out the question on the BET, uh, so that, the other items are not, because I was, well, correct me if I'm wrong, they check, they're saying yes or no on e- each of these questions. And to split out the BET, if the first question they vote no, they're voting no on the BET action. And there's other items in that first paragraph, which has quite a bit. I think that we increase the potential of all of that also getting voted no.
Alright, let's bring it up again, sorry.
That was the point I was trying to make is, cause there are some people who don't like the BET stuff. So I think there's a better chance of the whole, you know, the fifty things getting passed.
So.
Not getting shot down because of people not liking the.
So then here's, okay, I'm gonna try and do this on the fly, so just bear with me here. Imagine this is gone. Magic. Um, and then this is.
That would be it. The fourth question would be those two questions.
A, expand the board of estimates to include a member of council as a non, uh, voting member. And B.
Yeah.
Uh, permit separate expenditure, how do we do this? Permit separate on the general government and board of education budget.
That's a period there, yeah.
Well, it's actually, we need a.
Yeah, or question years.
So that would be if we were doing this as.
Yeah.
Okay, so behold, the four question version.
It's not that big a space.
So, uh, uh, again, that goes back to my comment about taking the two things out that those who did not vote for that are separating out, right? So now you're putting those two together.
Yeah, I would, I would stay with three. I, I don't think we should take it out. I, I don't think that's right. And I think, I don't think enough people, I don't think enough people, a lot of people know about the BET process to where we should be worried that it'd be more nosed in. Yes, yes.
I must say, I agree with Dewan.
Unless people can't pan against it and.
I understand that, but I, I don't know, I'm.
I think that our, the focus of this should be what is clearest and most understandable to the voter.
Yes.
Right, what is clear is the most understandable. I mean, I tend to think, you know, in that regard, I like groupings, you know, um. I mean, I say, you know, I've said all along, I wouldn't wanna see more than three or four questions here. I'm okay with four questions.
Yeah.
I, I, I know, I, if the. What is easiest and clearest for the voter to understand?
I, 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 I just think that the two that, you know, that has divided us are the two now that you're putting together as one. I mean, Greg just mentioned the, the BET being parsed out from number one. I didn't think you meant the first part. But I think that has something to do with the BET as well, but again, why not keep it all in one?
Mister C.
Yeah, I'm kind of in favor of the, the two to three. I mean, the point is, I mean, people are gonna campaign against this whole thing. So, um, I think just doing it so that it's clear is, is, is the best, is the best way to do it. Um, just, we could look at stuff in, in all parts of it where people would say, hey, I like that, but I'm not gonna like that. I think we could just make it clear, um, and I think that's the best thing we do for the voters.
Uh, Mrs. Natchoski Akner. Um, I also, I just trying to think about this practically. So there are actually quite a lot of other changes that are made to Article ten on the budget process. There are date changes, there's a substantial number of date changes, there's a fair amount of cleanup. Um, so that would need, we would actually need to break that out farther then, um. Because if we vote down, it's actually unclear to me where those fall in this question. So I think that's the other issue here. There, you know, there are other changes that were made to the budget process. And so if we wanna break out two of the items, um, I think we need clarity as to where they, where the other budget items fit in this. And again, I'm, you know, I feel like these are changes that were made, that were discussed, that were recommended by the council, that were recommended by the Charter Revision Commission. Um, I think that they, um, I think they should stand in with the other changes, um. But at the end of the day, uh, yeah, whatever is gonna be clearest for the voters, certainly, but I think that this is clear for the voters to have them because they are intended to be streamlined, such as they are intended to be positioned that, that serve the goals of the rest of these provisions, which is clarifying, increasing transparency and accountability, helping people understand what's happening. So I think it makes sense to include them in the provisions that are sort of geared at that kind of part of the process.
I, I, of course, I'm tending to look at this as a teacher, you know, and, and like what my students wish, what would be clearest to my students. Um, I, I think, so maybe let's take a vote on, uh, on whether we want three or four questions, whether we wanna break this up. So let's do that, um, and then we'll take it from there. But I think we're in pretty good shape with the language, right? Okay.
Alright, so basically the way this vote's gonna go is you say three or four. It's not yes or no.
No, okay, so then the question is going to be, do you support, um, three questions on the ballot? Let's start, let's do it that way.
Nice clarification though. Does that mean that what is shown in the draft here, number four, would be part of number one then?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and that's the, that's if we're voting for three, that's what we're voting on.
The, the three question version.
It's the three question version, okay.
Or the four question.
Returns between number three and number four and we'll look at it. Just, so we're not looking at that, okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, so I'll be, I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay, and what, what, just one other question. So does it, is it better if we move A and E back to back? Just look if, you know, we're gonna go with three questions, just again, my teacher perspective, right? You know, grouping them together. So we make.
Yes.
A, yeah, make A D, okay, so let's do that.
Gonna go the other way and put them at the end so that then to Ms. Air's point, they fall in the same order as the charter.
I'm sorry, so I'm sorry, move the B, move both of these items to the end?
Correct, start with change name of the common council is A.
Alright, hold on, just give me one second and I will do it, so.
So the other re- revisions building upon the twenty three charter vision, that's all the date changes and stuff?
Yeah, that's just.
Trust us on what it is or to read the newspaper for that. My, my inclination is to think people aren't gonna trust it and vote no, so, so I think pulling.
We can't put every single change.
I, I totally understand that, but I'm just talking about people's mindset, people that don't trust, that don't have a lot of trust.
But that's how we did it in twenty twenty three.
Why you may wanna pull out the things that are more important and separate it.
Then could you say something like other revisions building upon the twenty three charter vision as delineated in the explanatory, the accompanying explanatory text, like is that kind of thing helpful?
Josh, it's so, it's so much and it's so like purely editing and I understand and I understand why it's a problem. I'm just saying that it might cause people to vote no because they don't, they think that you're trying to throw something in there. So if you really, the BET to go through, it should be in a separate question.
But this is how we did it in twenty twenty three and we got eighty three percent of the vote, so. But this is how we did it in twenty twenty-three and we got eighty-three percent of the vote, so I'm actually thinking this, I'm I'm not super concerned about this language, because it does cover other things which are generally quite minor, I mean, we're talking about errata date changes, the elimination of the sheriff, like.
That I just.
Okay.
Okay.
Um.
All right, so let's, um let's vote on the number of questions based on what we see here, okay, so Mr. Jostke, and that three questions based on what we see here. So if you will support three questions, go ahead.
Yeah, so I will make a motion that the questions be that are on the ballot are the three questions uh as they are presented on the screen to us subject to errata uh and minor revisions as necessary for clarity, okay.
Any typos Josh made.
Okay. All right. Mr. Burnett?
No.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Najolski Egner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Seed?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Edie?
Yes.
Ms. Wintersstrand?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
No.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Fair?
I think his phone died, he told me.
Ms. Shannon?
No.
We just, okay, all right. It passes one, okay, three, four, five, six.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so we are holding with three questions. And then, um, so shall I, let me just read everything again, and then we can uh vote on item B. All right. So, item one, shall the charter be revised to A change the name of the common council to city council? B reduce petition requirements to facilitate public referenda. C create a public applicant pool to publicize board and commission vacancies. D permit separate expenditure caps on the general government and board of education. E establish authority to expand the board of estimate taxation to include a member of the common council as a non-voting ex officio member, and F other revisions building upon the twenty twenty-three charter revision. Number two, shall the charter be revised to create a four-year term for mayor and town clerk in the twenty twenty-nine municipal election and the council in the twenty thirty-one municipal election? Three, shall the charter be amended to provide each member of the council with compensation in an amount equal to three percent of the mayor's budgeted salary to be modified from time to time in accordance with the requirements of the state constitution? So that is our language included in item B. Attorney Mednick. Oh, yes, yes, because that is in the back, that that is in there, so yeah, add that to the.
I'm sorry, unless that's.
Item three, shall the show amended to provide a budget budget salary uh three percent uh effective.
Following the twenty.
Following the twenty twenty-nine municipal election.
I would take a two question.
Now, put that after a budgeted salary, Josh.
Yeah. And do we actually need the to be modified in time, by from time to time, do we need that? For a ballot question?
Probably not.
Well, the reason I put it, I may say. I hope not, just saying today. Uh, I wanted it, I suggested it in there and I've not questioned anything else you're doing here tonight, and this, I I'm shocked that we're getting through this, it's really impressive. Um, I wanted to put from time to time, because I think it's important for people to understand, it is not something that occurs um annually, um, the constitution has limitations on when you can take compensation increases, even with the increase, and that's the only reason I put that in there, um, for that purpose.
Okay, let me read that, item three again, since we added that language, shall the charter be amended to provide each member of the council with compensation in an amount equal to three percent of the mayor's budgeted salary following the twenty twenty-nine municipal election to be modified from time to time in accordance with the requirements of state constitution? Okay, so I've already read the approval part, uh that includes the language. And so we can call for a vote, am I correct? Okay, um. Yes, please. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Najolski Egner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Seed?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Edie?
Yes.
Ms. Wintersstrand?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
No, I still think there should be four questions, so.
Okay, we have one, and Mr. Fair is not bad. We have thirteen, thirteen, so that passes, yes. All right, good work, everyone, um, all right, and now CGENF, we discussed a few minutes ago, we can all read all together, correct? All right. Here we go. Um, item C, approval of the effective date as set forth in the final report upon adoption by a majority of the electors unless otherwise set forth in the charter. D authorize the town clerk to publish the proposed revised charter in a newspaper having general circulation in the municipality with a notice that a complete copy of the charter is available in the town clerk's office and that a copy be mailed to any person who requests a copy as required by CGS section seven dash one nine one D, and moreover, a copy of said charter shall be available on the city's website. And E authorize the corporation council and charter council to continually review the document for errata and non-substantive editorial revisions, republication, and F authorize pursuant to Connecticut General statutes nine da, section nine dash three six nine B. A, the town clerk with the assistance of the charter council to prepare an explanatory text specifying the intent and purpose of the proposed revised charter, that is the subject of the ballot question that will be voted upon on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Said final text is subject to approval of the preparation council. Do I have a motion? Do we need any discussion of these functionalities? All right, uh, Mr. Jostke Egner has uh made a motion, uh, and we will go ahead and do one last roll call, but. Mr. Burnett?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yep.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Najolski Egner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Seed?
Yes.
Mr. Wiggins?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Edie?
Yes.
Ms. Wintersstrand?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Sutton?
Yes.
Ms. Shanahan?
Yes.
Fourteen.
Well done, everyone. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. A motion.
Oh, wait a minute, guys, you gotta clap, you gotta clap, you gotta, you got through it, we got through it, come on, come on. Greg, I don't see your happy hands, come on.